Now.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, buenas noches, bienvenidos. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there is a second and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak during this first call, we encourage you to stay till the end. To participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen by selecting the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Remember that if you wait to raise your hand, you may not get a chance to speak during this first call and may have to wait until the end of the meeting to do so. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student wishing to speak tonight, please write an S at the end of your name so we know that you are a student. The board president also will determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. While you are speaking, a timer will appear on your screen. If you are still speaking once, your time is up. Please finish your sentence, but try not to go beyond your time. Después de unos procedimientos de inicio, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios del público. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano, ya. Ya que si se espera, tal vez tendrá que esperarse hasta el final de la junta para poder participar. Puede participar presionando el botón de raise your hand abajo de su pantalla o si habla por teléfono puede participar presionando estrella nueve. La presidenta Brown otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Aparecerá una cuenta regresiva en la pantalla que le avisará cuando ha transcurrido el tiempo. Si todavía sigue hablando cuando el tiempo se ha acabado, a favor, termine su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that opening, Ms. Charis. It's always great to have you here and to have you do that wonderful opening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to now call the August 24th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education, open session of this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. For the record, closed session began at 5:30. Ms. Charis, can you please call the role of the board of directors?
Of course, Director Julie Sinek.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Director Ian Siegel will be with us momentarily. I'm going to get him on. Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
And President Brown.
Present.
What am I, chopped liver?
Oh, yeah, I knew I was missing something. You saw my delay there. Oh, sorry. Director Ty Alper.
I'm present.
Absolutely. Okay, got it.
Thank you so much. We have now moved to the part of our agenda where we need to approve the agendas, our motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll move it.
Moved by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
I just wanted, for the record, item consent item 18, 11.18 needs to be pulled. That request is no longer, the trip has been canceled, travel has been canceled for that.
Vice President Babbitt, do you accept that shift to your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I believe for the record, Director Sinek seconded the motion. Ms. Charis, can you please call the role?
Director Sinek.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Siegel will be on, Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. The IAs have it and the motion passes and decides the agenda is approved. Vice President Babbitt, can you please report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you so much. Closed session today began at 5:30 PM. All members were present. For item 3.1.1, Director Alper recused himself. The motion was moved by Director Vasudev, seconded by Director Sinek, voted in favor by all remaining members. Item 3.1.2 was moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, and voted in favor unanimously. For item 3.1.3, Director Alper also recused himself. It was moved by Director Sinek, seconded by Director Vasudev, and all remaining board members voted in favor. For item 3.2 was moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, voted in favor unanimously. And then for item 3.3, we heard an update and gave direction. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well, Vice President Babbitt, for that report out in closed session. We have now moved to our first opportunity for public comment. As Ms. Charis shared in her opening, if you are interested in speaking to the Board of Education, this is the perfect time to please raise your hand using the raise hand feature on Zoom so that you may be given an opportunity to speak. As always, we will allow students to speak first. So if you are a student, please put S either at the beginning or at the end of your name so that you may be given priority to speak. At this time, I currently see 10 hands in. I currently see 10 hands up, 11 hands up, and we will begin our public speaking period with student Jonathan Schwartz, followed by Paula Thomas, with our last public commenter for this period being Lindsay Nofelt. Can you please promote student Jonathan Schwartz? Hi, Jonathan.
I'm just here for a small public comment about the attendance, the new attendance policy by the administration at Berkeley High School campus. So the new attendance policy essentially is gates close about one to two minutes after the second bell rings, so once class starts. And students who arrive late will then be prompted to go through the front desk and present their school ID and get a late slip. This doesn't sound too bad, but that last step of going to the front desk, there have been lines of 20 to 30 minutes. So students who arrive one to two to even three minutes late to school, the gates are closed and they can end up missing 30 minutes of their class time just in order to get a slip. And so I emailed Mr. Regosa about this problem and he said essentially by waiting extra time, it acts as a punishment, I would assume, and decentivizes students to show up late. That's essentially, he said, by waiting in this line, you're decentivizing students to show up late. And I don't think the school should be involved in making students more late to their first period class in order to decentivize them later. Also, one can only assume which students are most affected by a policy like this. Students who take the bus, who take public transport, whose families are not as able to get them to school on time all the time can be missing lots more of their first period class than they could have if gates were open an extra 10 minutes, just like the first 10 minutes after the bell rang. I think you could get rid of 90% of the people or 80% of the people who are in line and save a lot of educational time for the students. Now, that's my comment. I hope that you would do some changes. It's an extra 10 minutes and it helps students get to class and save a lot more time and learn a lot more. While also, students, this punishment idea, yes, I mean, I wish students all got to class on time and we were all in our seats, but that's not going to happen. And students are already punished for being tardy by getting marked tardy. You get marked tardy, you get a certain number of tardies and then you get a, you grade lower, certain teachers have certain policies. And I think it's really important for students to be able to get to class on time without extra punishment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jonathan. Thank you for your comments and thank you for being here this evening. We will have our next public commenter who will be Paula Thomas. And timekeeper, can you please put two minutes for Paula Thomas and two minutes for every other public speaker after. Thank you so much and thank you, Vice President, for supporting with your timer in the back. Hi, Paula, welcome. Whenever you're ready, Paula.
My apologies, I just, I just got this whole little notice. Hello, everyone. My name is Paula Thomas and I am the mother of an incoming freshman, Amina Benjamin, who is starting the Bridge program. And so I want to comment on some of my concerns that I have because as of today, the Bridge program does not have a full-time teacher to lead this particular cohort. When we found out about Bridge, we were really excited about the opportunity to join a program that was going to offer my daughter academic support, that was going to teach her leadership skills, prepare her for the rigors of applying for college and have her be competitive enough to attend. And then also to have an adult advocate for her on campus. And so we've been pretty dismayed to find out that, you know, there still is not a teacher. Additionally, she was not able to participate in a summer session. And so, you know, I just really want to urge the school board to make sure that they fund the staff that's needed and to also support this cohort for the next four years. I think that it's definitely something that's very much needed by families. I myself, I'm a single parent and I try to provide my daughter with as many enriching activities as possible, but she really needs the space on campus to be well-supported as well. So, thank you.
Thank you as well, Paula. Next, we will have Robert Rainey, followed by Robert Kershaw. Whenever you get a chance, can you please promote Robert? He is next, Robert Rainey, and then followed by Robert Kershaw. Hi, Robert, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. I am Robert Rainey, the parent of the incoming freshman, Simeon Rainey. And I too was a little disheartened. My wife and I were a little disheartened to hear that the Bridge program is no longer going to be funded. Our son Simeon is really thriving through this program and we would really love for this to continue to be funded and for him to continue to thrive through this program. It is very important, you know, we feel as freshmen entering a new realm of high school or a new realm of school period, you know, coming from, you know, elementary to middle is a change and then from middle to high school is another change that is, can be, you know, you can drop in and out of those types of situations if you're not grounded well enough. And I think the Bridge program does a good, a really good job of grounding him and getting him where he needs to be, like the other panelists had just said, you know, and set up with the rigors of the upcoming year and the years that they're going to face going to, going to high school. So I would also like to urge, you know, the school board to make sure that this program can stay funded so that our kids can continue to thrive as we need them to thrive to become, you know, better students, better societal members and better people just in general. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you as well and thanks for being here with us. Next, we will have Robert Kershaw, followed by Tim Bates. Hello, Robert, please feel free to begin whenever you're ready. Robert, you are ready. You can begin with your public comment.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't see the unmute sign. This is just a repeat of the letter. I'm going to read it out for public record, the letter I sent to the board on Monday and to the superintendent. My family, like all of you, well, dear Superintendent Ford Marthell and board directors, my family, like all of you, is excited for the 2022, 2023 school year. As you're aware, I sent you all photos I took on August 19th, that was last Friday, of the welcome to Berkeley Schools COVID guidelines signs at the entrance of Berkeley Tech and BIS campus on August 22nd, '22. I sent you the email. These signs are still up. I've since noticed these signs at Longfellow, MLK, and Rosa Parks. I'm sure they are elsewhere. They are inaccurate. The BUSD policy on masking clarity states in the superintendent's letter dated August 10th and the BUSD COVID-19 protocols of 2022, 2023 video, as well as the district safe at school document that masks indoors are only strongly recommended, not required, I repeat, not required. The physical distancing guidelines is also no longer BUSD policy, not to mention impractical, yet there it is at the top of these signs. I would add the inaccuracy of the hand washing and hand sanitizing protocols when it comes to preventing the spread of SARS-CoV-2. Personal hygiene is a valid responsibility when it comes to our health and hygiene, just not for SARS-CoV-2. Indeed, the most effective way to prevent the spread of this virus is stay home if you have symptoms of any kind, but that sound advice for any illness and not unique to COVID-19. I understand the BUSD develops health policy in part from the California Department of Public Health and Berkeley's city's own health department. I also expect the BUSD is aware of the CDC's recent significant shift in its recommendations around COVID. At some point, there needs to be an alignment or at least very clear explanation as to why BUSD policy, let me finish because I only got about 20 seconds. At some point, there needs to be an alignment at the very clear explanations to why BUSD policy and the recommendations differ from federal guidelines since we all must importantly, our kids move through any number of public environments, not just school. You have a responsibility to integrate into the broader community. But let's stay within the bounds of the school. This is a truth to power moment, something I know BUSD speaks about all the time. Today, a teacher in one of my children's classes, I need to finish this because it's important today. The student.
And it is important to us as well and there's another opportunity at second public comment.
It's just, it's 10 more seconds, 10 seconds. 10 seconds, we don't give you 10 seconds to say that.
Sure, you can have 10 seconds.
Thank you. Today, a teacher in one of my children's classes required the students to put masks on because he was, they were sure masks were required indoors. He handed them out to kids who didn't have one. I have a huge respect for this teacher. I do not blame them. Acting sincerely on misinformation, where is this misinformation coming from? I expect anyways, I will just say these signs should come down. They should not be at school tomorrow. I expect them to be gone or covered up by school tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we will have Tim Bates, followed by Zia Mankin-Hardie.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Tim, yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Tim Bates. I am brand new to BUSD. My kid is in transitional kindergarten and I couldn't be happier to have them part of the BUSD community. And I'm sorry to pile on, but my comment is directly, directly follows from the previous commenter. I won't, I won't repeat everything you just said. The, we did all receive the email stating BUSD's policy specific to masking for this year, that strongly recommended, not required. My kid is being required to wear a mask in his classroom and that is because the teacher feels or the staff feels they have vulnerable family members that need protection. Therefore, in their classrooms, masks are required. I think it would be helpful for families across BUSD to understand that this is the policy, if in fact it is, that there is not a district-wide policy, but in fact, policy is going to be set according to the preferences of individual teachers in individual classrooms, which I can, I'm sure you can gather. That's problematic. That is not science-based. That's simply ad hoc preferences. So that's my comment. I hope you can have time, you will take time to address this and let everybody know, either families or teachers and staff themselves, within one clear voice, this is BUSD policy and no exceptions. Thanks so much.
Thank you as well, Tim. And it isn't the traditional practice of the board to respond to public comments. And so I'll ask the superintendent in her comments to share a bit of an update around the advocacy that you just provided to us. Thank you, Tim. At next, we will have Zia, followed by Krista Wrigley-Jenis.
Can you hear me? Sorry, it's so weird to ask that, but there's nothing that changes in my screen when I'm being heard. Hi, I'm Zia Manik and Hurdy. I've spoken to you before in my capacity as a third grade teacher at Malcolm X, but tonight I am here in my capacity as a parent and as a parent of a full-inclusion student. My student has special needs that require the help of an adult throughout the day. His IEP outlines that he is to have one-to-one support. That includes help with basic balance while walking in line. He's had the Heimlich maneuver at school due to his wonderful aid because he chokes occasionally on very small bites of food, just part of his lack of muscle control. And I'm frustrated that even though he has a full aid and that's provided during the day at school, that for some reason that same support is not being offered in his after-school program at Learns at Malcolm X. He, I've talked with Cindy about the staffing and she's aware of the needs, but we're still being told that there's no one available to be with my son after school in the one-to-one position. He has someone with him for an hour and a half of the 1:30 to 5:30 period that I pay for, for him to be in Learns. But in the time when he is not with that one-to-one aid, he's having bathroom accidents or I'm being asked to come down to help him. He very much needs this aid and I'm frustrated. I understand that there is a staffing shortage, but there are people available and willing to work with him. Because I'm at school, I know the IAs who are available, they are willing to work overtime and they are being told they're not allowed to work beyond their shift, even though they are asking for the extra hours. This is completely unacceptable. If you can't fund someone to take the position to be with my son, I ask that you at least allow people to work overtime. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Krista Wrigley, followed by Christina. Hi, Krista, welcome.
Hi, sorry, I. Okay, I guess my video is not going to work, but hi, I'm the personal finance teacher at Berkeley High School. I'm here tonight because Berkeley High School is not safe. Principal Regosa has done an amazing job securing our campus with what little resources he has, but it doesn't come close to enough. We have three campus entrances that are unmonitored and unstaffed. Two of these entrances are in the GH building and one on Kitterich and Millia. These entrances are locked from the outside but are constantly being propped open or opened by students and staff to let in people who are banging on the door to get in. The mass shooting in Uvalde, Texas left 21 people dead happened because the shooter got in through a door that was supposed to be locked. 19 students and two teachers died because of a security error that should have never happened. And yet this security error is a normal occurrence on our campus each day. We need to do everything in our power to keep over 3,000 students and staff safe by securing these three entrances. We need more safety officers. We need alarms on these doors that would trigger a lockdown every time they are open. School shootings are always going to be a risk, but we should not be taking on this risk due to negligence from our superintendent and school board. And let me remind you that last fall, we had two adults on campus with a gun looking for a particular student. This happened while we didn't have a working PA system for months, so there's no way for administration to tell us to lock down or evacuate. Schools should have never been allowed to operate during this time. But case in point, armed individuals on our campus has already happened and we are very lucky, nothing tragic took place. I did not become a teacher with the understanding that my life was on the line when I stepped into the classroom each and every day. Please step up and secure these entrances as soon as possible. Hire more safety officers. Please alarm these doors. Over 3,000 lives walk onto BHS every single day and above all else, protecting these lives is your number one job. Teaching and learning is secondary to our safety. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Christina, followed by Tatiana Guerum Ramos.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Go right ahead.
With deep respect, I ask King Middle School to offer the option of eating lunch outdoors. We have students who go home to family members who are immunocompromised or living in multi-generational families. We have students who have anxiety about COVID and forcing them to take their masks off indoors with hundreds of other children in order to eat the food that their bodies and minds need to function properly is unconscionable. Families have told me that their child sits in the cafeteria refusing to take off their mask and tries to sneak in small bites of food under their mask. We have the power to offer our children a safe environment that follow best practices for their emotional and physical well-being. Alameda County Public Health states that wearing masks is strongly urged in indoor settings. The Close Contact Notification emails that I've already received twice says, CDPH strongly recommends wearing a well-fitting mask, especially indoors for 10 days after exposure. These students, my child, is not allowed or able to follow that public health guideline. On the BerkeleySchools.net website, it says face masks strongly recommended indoors is one of the five key practices for reducing the spread of COVID-19. We must provide the option for each family to protect themselves as much as they deem necessary. Forcing children to take off their mask indoors to eat lunch is not equitable to families at higher risk. The CDPH guidance states, no person can be prevented from wearing a mask as a condition of participation in an activity or entry into a school. This is under the list of required actions. But let us be allies to those who are vulnerable. As much as we are, quote, "living in COVID, living with COVID", there are still 450 Americans who die every day. As stated in the New York Times today, it said that number could rise in the coming months as people spend more time indoors. We are here on this board meeting and we are on Zoom because it says online, board meetings for the duration of the COVID-19 public health crisis is on Zoom. So I ask you, please let children go outside to eat if they need, if it's necessary for them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you as well, Christina. At next, we will have Tatiana, followed by Rob Grimes. Hi, Tatiana, welcome. You're free to begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Tatiana Gaher-Hammas. I'm the parent of three Berkeley Unified students, one graduated last year. And I'm writing, I'm talking because I'm very, very concerned about the number of Black and Brown students who keep on showing up as ninth graders at Berkeley High, reading at a fourth and fifth grade level. It's unacceptable to me that the high school would continue to often use these bodies to raise money for the athletic department and not educate those same Black and Brown children for further education and independent living, especially the kids who have been in special education. I find it abhorrent that I have my godson, for example, is reading and at a level way below where he should be and that it's been okay for him to just be reading manga in his English class. It's completely unnecessary and unacceptable. So, and I would like for something to be done about this, including more co-taught classes at Berkeley High. It's ridiculous that this is a full-inclusion district that doesn't equip teachers with the training and the resources that they need in order to scaffold kids with learning. the resources that they need in order to scaffold kids with learning differences. General education can be totally fine as long as there is somebody in the classroom who knows how to support kids with learning differences. My expectation is that the district will deal with this soon. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Tatiana. Next, we will have Rob followed by Giovanna Blanton. May we please promote Rob Grimes? Are we having any trouble promoting Rob?
Yeah, I am. I'm not able to get him to become a panelist on here. Can we go with the next one before him?
Yes, the next one would be Giovanna Blanton followed by Lindsay Nofelt. And then we'll come back around to Rob. Thank you for communicating that to me. You know what? I see that you've already placed Lindsay Nofelt on the screen, so. Thank you so much. Hi, Giovanna, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine, I think. Try it again. You're breaking up a little bit and I'm wondering if that's just my in-board directors. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear, okay, or thumbs down if you cannot. Okay, Giovanna, do you want to give it one more try? Giovanna, unfortunately, we cannot hear you at all. Board directors, are you hearing sound? No, okay. Giovanna, unfortunately, we cannot hear you at all. So we are going to go to our next public commenter and then we'll come back to you, okay? Our next public commenter is Lindsay Nofelt.
I believe she has Rob Grimes ready to go.
For some reason, I wasn't able to promote him to panelists, but I believe he's able to speak.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rob, can you hear us okay? Rob, can you hear us okay? We can't hear you. Wow, this is an exciting night.
Come back to Mr. Grimes and let Ms. Nofelt go ahead.
Yes, we can, we can come back to Rob. And Lindsay, if you are on and ready, we'll go ahead and receive your public comment. Hi, Lindsay, welcome.
Hello, can you see me?
Woo-hoo, we can see you and we can hear you. All right, here we go.
My name is Lindsay Nofelt and I am speaking as a parent of a first and fourth grade student at Berkeley Unified. I'd like to use my public comment to let our wonderful energetic community know about a brand new parent-led initiative called the Berkeley Parents Union. All those whose students have attended BUSD schools in the past three years are welcome to join this organization. It's free and it doesn't require very much of your time, but it can make all the difference in your child's experience in BUSD. I hope that everyone listening will go to BerkeleyParentsUnion.org to learn more and join the movement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will try Rob Grimes once more. I believe I see an additional hand for Rob in the participant panel. So we may have to promote that one in order to be able to hear from Rob.
Mr. Grimes, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'll go fast. I just wanted to make a comment in reference to the Bridge program. I went to Berkeley High, my kids went to Berkeley High, my wife went to Berkeley High, my daughter graduated from Berkeley High. Now my son is a freshman at Berkeley High and I spent time on the board the whole time he was at Willard. And it was, it was a great thing to be able to know that he was going to be coming and joining Berkeley High for one and had the Bridge program to look forward to. And this was something that, being on the board, I didn't really know about until my son brought it to my attention. And he came to me and he was like, Dad, you know, we got the Bridge program, we want to Berkeley High. I got the paper, I want to enroll in that. It's going to help me with this and that in college. And we all know what the Bridge program can do, right? And so just to hear that there's going to be no more funding for that brings a little bit of disappointment to me because I know how much, not just all kids, but especially the Black and the Brown kids need this extra help after school, after the classes are done. And when kids are being proactive and wanting to get that help, I just feel like we really have to really focus on that, right? And steer those children in the right direction. And if, if we can't control what we're doing with the funds and we don't have money to fund these type of programs that enable these kids to be able to be more successful in life, right? My question is, what are we doing before we end these programs? To make sure that we're giving the resources out and we're making sure that these kids and their parents there's other programs and there's other things that are going to help them. Because the message is being passed along from a child's perspective, right? These young kids, okay, this is ending. They don't care. Now what do we do? But my thing is, as much as we want programs like this to continue, and I only got 30 seconds. And as much as we would really want the funding for these things to happen, if we can't, we, we have responsibilities as, 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 as teachers and as administrators and you guys' level to make sure that we are definitely giving out all of the resources that Berkeley High has that are being funded. That's going to be able to help them out with these type of programs in and let these kids know, look, don't worry, that's ending, but we have this and we have that. So these kids stay motivated and want to continue to be motivated when it comes to their education, which is also hard to get these kids to be endured and engaged in. So thank you for my time. I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you as well, Rob, for your comments to the board this evening and to you and to those others who were able to speak to the board tonight about Bridge. I'm going to ask that our superintendent in her comments share a bit of clarification around what has happened, what is currently taking place with Bridge to ensure that we are all receiving the same message as well as the plan to support this advocacy that is brought forth. For our final commenter this evening, we will have Sam. Ms. Charis, can you please promote Sam?
Hello, board. My name is Samuel Kaplan-Pettis. I'm on the Youth Commission. I just want to use this opportunity to ask all of you to use your platform to advocate to the City Council about putting youth on the Environmental and Climate Commission. It's a project we've been working on for a while and I would really love and appreciate your support. It probably will happen too soon for an official support from the whole board. But if you can reach out to school, City Council Board, City Council members and put in a good word on this issue and community members who are on this call. We have a petition and also if you can reach out to your individual City Council members and advocate for it, that would be amazing. I'm advocating for myself, not the commission, but this is a unanimously passed recommendation from the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. And thank you to all of our public commenters. Our public comment period for this first opportunity is now closed. But as a reminder, there will be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. At this time, we will move to our agenda item to receive comments from our committees here in BUSD. Are there any committee comments this evening? I'd like to recognize Tae Sung, who will give committee comments on behalf of the PTA. Can you please promote Tae Sung?
President Brown, can you repeat that name, please?
Yes, it's Tae Sung. It's T S E hyphen S U N G. They currently have their hands up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you just fine. How are you?
Hello, it's Tae Sung. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you twice.
Great, nice. Oh, yes. So this is Tae Sung, who from the Berkeley PTA Council. I just wanted to share some highlights from last school year. That's 2021, 2022. The council went through a goal-setting process a year ago and decided upon a prioritized list of goals. These included the following: working on the Extended Learning Plan, trying to move, trying to move the needle on mental health, math achievement, sharing of information and resources across PTAs, and explore the sharing of PTA funds. And this resulted in the following: the sharing of PTA fundraising and expenditure data, the development and adoption of a PTA budget template based on the BSEP budget categories with a long-term goal of coordinating or partnering with the BUSD on budget setting, restarting work on the Extended Learning Task Force recommendations. And this resulted in the formation of a BUSD PTA Council Working Group that meets regularly to implement the recommendations. We increased our knowledge on literacy goals. We increased our knowledge on the district's capex process. So for this coming year, we are finalizing our goals. We currently, we're working on the following: continuing the work on PTA fundraising and expenditure data sharing and taking that work to the next level, continue to collaborate with district staff on extended learning. And in particular, there is a great deal of interest in resuming PTA-funded after-school programming. We'd also like to participate in or host voter education efforts for this November's school board election. We would like to better coordinate among parent representatives at the various district oversight committees in order to align on goals and share information so that we can be more effective. And lastly, we also have some new work on arts equity and hope to share more detail in about two weeks' time. And that's all. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you as well. Are there any other committee comments this evening? Saying that, we now move to union comments. Ms. Charis, I believe we have a video from BFT. Are you in receipt of that?
I will be sharing right now.
Thank you so much. Whenever you're ready. We can't quite hear the sound yet. If you want to reshare with sound. Ian, I see that you're sharing now, but we still can't hear the sound. Do you want to try to reshare? Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you just fine.
I'm working two devices.
I also have the video up on my end. If you want to give me sharing capabilities, I can just share it. We're almost there. Turn it up just a little more.
Sorry, I will share on a different device. Just a moment.
It's no problem at all. If anyone who is the host, I can support with sharing the screen.
President Brown, do you have the ability to share your screen?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Superintendent Ford Morphon in the Berkeley School Board. I am Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I want to start off by welcoming our new superintendent to Berkeley. Our staff is excited to work in collaboration with you as we strive to provide an excellent education to our community. I know many of our educators are eager to get to know you. It is exciting to see our students back at our school sites bustling with curiosity and wonder. There's renewed energy that accompanies school being back in session. This comes from our students and creates vibrant classrooms, ones that we love. As the year starts again, we are back at the negotiating table. There are many unresolved issues that we hope the district can engage with us on. I actually believe that we all see things the same way. Our staff needs to be paid fair wages that will keep us in the profession and make us competitive with neighboring districts. Meetings that require teacher and case manager participation outside of the workday should be paid. If a teacher takes in students from another classroom for the day, they should be compensated. There's too much variation in our class sizes for harms relationship building and our ability to serve our students well. We need to get these issues resolved so we can fully focus on starting this year off well. Our elementary and secondary class size proposals provide a rationale for how to allocate resources. The class size average, as written into BSEP and our contract, does not provide enough constraints to ensure that class sizes will actually be near those averages. As our school population stabilizes, our proposals will allow the district to plan ahead of time so we don't end up with a classroom of 27 first graders without anyone to hire. Having this process be transparent and contractual is fair, cost-effective, and is in the best interests of our students. I know that compensation is a difficult topic to speak about. As you heard last year, our staff put themselves in front of the public eye, shared their real stories, their love for the work they do, and the financial struggles they face. They continue to do so because they want to stay in this work and our community needs them. 25% of our certificated staff has been hired in the past two years. One out of four case managers, lit coaches, counselors, classroom teachers, and school psychologists are new. They do not have relationships with their families and with their sites. They will build them, but I can't stress enough how each person we lose is bigger than it seems. It's not just a loss to their site, their small school or department. It's a loss to our families. It's a loss to our community. Since we are a full inclusion district, it means starting over for our case managers. Or if they're a case manager, learning how to work closely with 20 to 30 staff members and learning the needs of the entire caseload all at once. We need to show our staff that they are valued and that they can make a career here. Our students and families deserve highest-quality educators. All of our proposals fall in line with current budget realities. They recognize cost of living increases never experienced in many of our lifetimes. They address real working condition concerns our members have. Other nearby districts that have already settled contracts are receiving nearer or more than we are asking for, all of them. If we don't match and beat them, we will be on the path to the least-paid school employees in the county. From that, we will not recover. We must take advantage of years of more funding to catch up to our neighboring districts. We need to know that staff and students are a priority in this district. Let's get this year started off right, settle our contract, and focus on teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt Meyer, president of Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Are there any other union comments this evening from BCCU, UBA, or Local 21? I don't see any other hands in the participant panel, so at this time, we will move on to board member comments. I'm going to ask student director Ian Siegel if you would like to go first.
Yes, thank you so much, President Brown. I'd love to take a moment to thank all of our wonderful students and staff for an amazing first week. It was great to see everyone back at school and see everyone so engaged in like a dynamic classroom, and it was great to see everyone participating and involved. I also want to thank those who I've met with over the past week. Prince Larry goes as superintendent Ford Mortel, Amanda Moreno, and Angela Coppola. I really appreciate your time, and I really enjoyed our discussions. I want to talk about two things really quickly. The first being the recommendation from the Youth Commission to have the school board approve a seat on the Environmental and Climate Commission. We've seen through the student representative to the school board the power that a youth seat can have on a government, a governing body. And I think replicating that would be a great idea. Climate change impacts youths directly, and so having a student representative on that will have, will be essential so we can incorporate their perspective and input. Additionally, as we create new governing bodies, we should strive to be as representative of our district as we can be so that incorporates all age groups. And so I hope that we can support this measure. I also wanted to take a moment to address a really important issue, which is teacher compensation for letters of recommendation. The teacher letter of recommendation is an integral part of every college application, whether it be to private university or public. And every year, upper-class teachers at Berkeley High can expect to be asked by anywhere from five to sixty-five students for letters of recommendation. This is, the time spent on these letters is extra to their normal teaching time, and it's usually, it's really amazing that our teachers are usually able to grant this privilege to all of our students. And the compensation for this is usually distributed individually by each of the small schools. And unfortunately, this year, many of those provisions are being taken away. And as a result, many teachers are electing to not write letters of recommendation. This unfortunately has a huge impact on our students negatively and impacts their aspirations post-high school. As a district, we really want to create an educational experience for each student that provides equal opportunity and equal access, whether they're pursuing the workforce or keeping the avenue to college open. And so we really want to aid them in whatever pursuits they have. And so this is a time-sensitive issue as we have seniors applying in the fall. And so I hope that we can continue working with our teachers to find a solution that we can continue to support our teachers who in turn support our students. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will go to Vice President Babitt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to give my board comments because I really want to be sure I acknowledge and thank everyone who reached out to ensure your child's needs are being met, from those families that are on waitlists to change schools or for after-school programs, or to those concerned about our enrichment program offerings, including those named in the board's approved African-American success framework. I want you all to know that I am following up to ensure BUSD will honor its commitments as these are all areas that do tie directly to our four Es. I'm hoping that our new superintendent is not getting tired of me. It's only week two. And I do believe that by the end of the school year, we will have better systems in place to avoid these kinds of hurdles. Also, in hearing the public comment today about the doors being propped open at Berkeley High School, I'm truly confident that BHS can implement a system to monitor these doors, ensure they are closed, and educate our students and faculty on how leaving these doors open endangers everyone. It's also an honor to congratulate everyone for all of the meaningful ways our schools have opened this year with new principals, most teaching positions filled, and an overall energy of excitement and community. I'm encouraging caregivers to attend all upcoming back-to-school nights and find out all the ways you can support your school community. As I say often, the more the parent, the teacher, and the student work together, the better the outcomes for the student. I want to shout out the Coalition for Anti-Racism at Rosa Parks and let people know that you can get involved or connected with them at antiracism@rosaparkselementary.org. I want to shout out the Berkeley Parents Union, as was announced during public comment. Their website, berkeleyparentsunion.org, reflects that they believe in the mission of BUSD. It states our mission, and they believe that elected officials must be accountable for prioritizing student needs and that the community's diversity is essential as we work together to ensure that our children receive a quality public education. Membership is free, and their motto mirrors the National Parents Union's motto, which says, "Our kids, our voice." So check them out when you can. September seventeenth, 2022, the Berkeley Community Safety Coalition is having a community summit on mental health and Berkeley's youth. Panelists include impacted youth, engaged therapists, dedicated school staff and administrators, and experts on suicide, crisis, and prevention. This will be on Zoom, so you can find that link by going to berkeleycommunitiesafety.org. Again, September seventeenth, it's Saturday in the morning, berkeleycommunitiesafety.org for the link. Tonight, you will be hearing our superintendents about our superintendent's listening sessions, and I strongly encourage all of you to participate, even those of you who are so tired of repeating yourself to BUSD. She needs to know that I'm not making this stuff up by hearing from all of you directly, L O L. Thanks again to everyone for being here tonight and for being a part of the BUSD community. I'm excited for a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Babitt, especially for the L O L. All right, we will move on to Director Sinai, if you're ready.
Thank you, President Brown. I would like to start out by thanking and appreciating everybody who provided public comment and who has been emailing us. It means a lot to me that you dedicate time out of your busy schedules to share your concerns with the board. I'm happy to welcome everyone back to school. We have a lot to look forward to, and we have a lot of work to do. I want to thank all the community organizations, volunteers, family members, and BUSD staff who helped ensure a smooth path into school with donations of school supplies, support for families, and school beautification efforts. I believe this school year will continue to be a recovery year from the pandemic. Partnering with our families to support our students is of the utmost importance. Creating a warm, welcoming, safe environment is critical to the success of our students. Making sure our resilient and valued teachers and staff have the support they need is a top priority, which is why I'm eager to secure mutually beneficial contracts or contracts that support and retain our strong workforce. I do want to draw special attention to the importance of ensuring the stability of the Berkeley High Bridge Program. Bridge is a data-driven, proven program that provides support to students for their high school success and transition to post-secondary experience. We need a permanent teacher for the ninth-grade cohort. Just to clarify, the challenge with the Bridge Program is not an issue of funding. The school board made it very clear that we're funding the Bridge Program. The challenge right now is staff, is finding a qualified teacher. As I mentioned moments ago, this is a year when we need to go the extra mile for our students. Bridge is one of those programs that wraps around a host of social, emotional, and academic resources for our kids. I want to just really clarify that we need a qualified teacher for Bridge, and and we need them now because the program needs to, it's got a stopgap right now, but we need to be able to continue it. And I've talked with the superintendent, and I have really urged her, as well as Berkeley High Administration, to find a solution to ensure the stability with the appropriate staff. I also want to express our understanding that the staffing challenges are also impacting full enrollment for our Learns After School Program, and this is causing a hardship for many families. Be assured that the district is doing everything it can to get those positions filled so that we can bring people off of the waiting list. Lastly, I think it's a great idea to have youth voice on the city's new Climate Action Commission, and I will be sending a letter to our elected representatives in the city. I'm looking forward to a dynamic agenda this evening, and thank you all very much.
Thank you as well, Director Sinai. Next, we will go to Director Alper.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Director Vasudev.
Thank you, President Brown. I just want to thank everyone for coming to tonight's board meeting. I really appreciated the comments from our student director and also from our youth commissioner about the importance of having a youth seat on the Climate Commission. Happy to support and work offline with you to see what needs to happen so we can continue to advocate for that. I'd like to also thank the Berkeley Federation of Teachers for their comments tonight. And I am also grateful for the comments that Vice President Babitt mentioned about the high school. We'll be following up with our superintendent to make sure that our high school community feels safe and is safe this year. I also wanted to thank the parents that came to share their perspectives and feelings about COVID-19 mitigation in our schools. As the public can see, you know, there's concerns on both sides. There's people that think we have too little mitigation in place and folks that that feel that we're doing more than we need to. And so it's a complex situation. And I have appreciated our district staff that are working really closely with our families to be able to work through some of their specific concerns. And also want to give a shout out to our principals because I know they've been fielding a lot of questions from our parents. So thank you to our principals for doing that. I'd also like to start off just by saying how thrilled I am to have our students and education workers back at our schools. I hope that everyone is having a great beginning of the school year, and I know that our staff and PTAs are working really hard for the various back-to-school night activities this week at our elementary schools and next week at our secondary schools. So thank you for all the hard work that you're putting into back-to-school nights. I've also enjoyed seeing the strong partnership continue to grow between our city and the school district on important transportation and infrastructure projects ahead of the upcoming school year. So most notably, I want to thank the members of the Two by Two Committee for last year, working very closely to further Councilmember Sophie Hahn's Bright Streets Initiative. I was pleased to see that our city's Public Works Department sent out a report this week to state that they had addressed important service request needs at Cragmont, King Middle School, Ruth Acti, Rosa Parks, and Washington Elementary ahead of the school year. This work includes refreshing pavement markings and enhancing existing crosswalks to high-visibility crosswalks for our students, as well as adding important signage to reduce the speed limit near our schools. And so this is all really important. It's part of the culture of safety that we need to continue to work together with the city on to make sure that our student drop-offs and pickups happen very safely. We all, and by "we," I mean the city, the school district, our families, we all have a collective role to play in ensuring that drop-offs and pickups happen safely and that our student pedestrians are safe on their way to and from school. So thank you to our city partners for putting those measures in place ahead of the school year. I know these concerns have been raised at the Two by Two and will continue to be raised at the Two by Two because it's important that we're partnering together and making sure that our, you know, our students can get to school safely. I'm also excited, and I reported about this last week, but this weekend, I will be attending the California Latino School Board Association's Unity Conference. And on Saturday, I'm excited to present with our Associate Superintendent Hogan-Guyke and our Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging, Matthew Espinoza, on the progress made so far on the Latinx resolution and the work that has yet to be done. But I look forward to reporting lessons learned from other districts and to see what other things other districts are doing to advance Latinx student achievement and to further their equity work. And so thanks, everyone, for coming, and I look forward to our discussion tonight.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. My comments are incredibly short this evening. First, I just want to say thank you to you all who came to join us this evening for the board meeting and to Josh Daniels, just to say to the thousands of those viewers who are out watching us. Thank you all so much for joining us. There are so many things that are happening around the district, including the start of school. And so thank you to our teachers, our educators, our classified staff, our families, and most importantly, our students who came back to school ready to go and who are ready to learn, thrive, and overall are Berkeley-ready. And so you'll hear our superintendent talk about that a lot. And so we are excited that this school year, we started Berkeley-ready. And we're excited to keep remaining Berkeley-ready throughout the school year. And so thank you to those of you who helped us start off with a bang. Additionally, there are so many events that we all are going to around the district. But I just wanted to highlight the PTA meeting that happened the other night. As a committee member, I really enjoyed the conversations that were also, conversations and comments that were elevated this evening around the need for and the push for district-wide policy around indoor/outdoor lunch that is aligned all around our district. Need for increased representation with our parents, the parent leaders during our school board meetings, as well as the ongoing need for timely, effective communication around our enrichment programs, including school AAS summer. So I'm really appreciative of those rich conversations. Vice President Babitt was also in attendance at that meeting. And we appreciated hearing directly from our parents, the needs, and advocacy to ensure that we are serving our students as well as partnering with our parents better. So those are my comments, very short this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Ford Mortel.
Thank you, President Brown. Give evening to our students, our community members, families, and staff. It must be evidence of our alignment because many of the things that our board directors mentioned in their opening comments were some of the same things that I was going to speak to in mine. So I'm going to try to make some modifications and not be redundant, but to reiterate some of the points where necessary. So first and foremost, I just want to say and celebrate that there has been so much joy and energy across BUSD as our students and families returned to schools last week. I was with families who gathered for coffee and on the blacktops to hear our principals welcomes. Our students were excited with chatter with their classmates about their summer and also what to expect for the year ahead. And our teachers, our amazing teachers, greeted students with excitement and jumped right in. But what I would say is a healthy balance between building community and setting the stage for what's going to be a rigorous year of learning. So there was so much evidence of excellence, engagement, and enrichment across all of our sites in BUSD, from our early childhood sites all the way to our high school and our adult school. We opened this school year with the majority of our classrooms fully staffed, and it is truly a testament to the commitment of our BUSD educator. So I wanted to shout them out right here and right now. I will do that often. There continues to be some vacancies, as you heard, and some areas that need immediate attention, most notably our Extended Learning Program and our Bridge Program. We were able to move many families off the waiting list for our Bears and Learns After School Program, yet we still have students on the waitlist. And so tonight, we will be seeking board approval on a contract to provide additional staffing for that after-school program. The staffing of the ninth-grade cohort, which we heard about both in public comments and in our board director's comments, is another example of a staffing challenge. And just like Director Sinai, I do want to reiterate, this is not an issue of funding, that there are no plans to end this amazing program, that we are aware of the value, the impact, and the importance of this program for our students and families, and that we are working diligently to really make sure that the Bridge Program, the after-school program, and all of our classrooms and programs have committed adults interacting with our babies for the duration of the school year. That said, I've heard so much positive feedback around Week One and even as we enter into Week Two. And so I'm very proud. And so I'm very proud to be a part of BUSD and the work of our district to make sure that we are, as President Brown said, Berkeley-ready. I'm not done. I also want to shout out some of the ways that we made sure that our students and families were Berkeley-ready as well. Many of you might have heard, but leading up to the opening of school, our OFE staff gave out more than 700 school supply kits to BUSD students. In addition to coordinating more than 15 community organizations to support our families on Saturday, August 13th. And we had more than 10 volunteers from our district staff and Berkeley Public Schools Fund supporting families in English, Spanish and Arabic. Last week, our amazing VAPA staff hosted a pilot program called Pangaea, the Pangaea Project. And that was a two Saturday-long program that was really focused on providing our students of color with opportunities to really go in depth with the musical instruments as they entered into fourth grade. The event was organized by our VAPA Equity Specialist Jay Woodington, and workshops were taught by BUSD music teachers. And it was just amazing way to have our incoming fourth graders come together and start to tinker with, if you will, and learn about the various instruments that they will be exposed to so that when they select their instrument for the fourth grade year, they'll be making an informed decision. And so the day was an overwhelming success, which much positive parent feedback and support. And 100-plus happy fourth graders went home with more background info on how to choose their instrument. Our elementary teams are ready, as Director Vasudev said, for back to school night tomorrow, Thursday, across BUSD. And we are really eager to say hello in person to our families, welcome you back and kick off the year of collaboration and partnership. Finally, I always want to acknowledge our current context. There is a COVID update that last week Alameda County did move to the CDC's low COVID community level. And this means that BUSD has moved to response testing at our schools per CDPH guidance. And so during response testing, we provide at-home tests to students and staff who are close contacts with a case. And we want to remind you that all of our students and all of our staff can continue to be tested at the Curtis Street entrance to the Berkeley Adult School on Monday through Friday from 10:30 to 6:30 PM. Finally, BUSD continues to follow public health guidance. We will continue to reiterate our expectation to staff and sites around masking that masks are strongly recommended and not required while indoors. And we were made aware that some of those signs that had the more restrictive COVID rules are still up and were still up. We have asked our site teams to take those down, and tomorrow Supervisor will be visiting our sites to make sure that all of those some signs are removed and not cause further confusion in our community. That is the end of my comments. I appreciate the time and look forward to sharing my 90-day plan in a few minutes.
Yes, in a few minutes. Thank you so much Superintendent Fortmore though, for your comments and updates that you shared around things that are happening in our district. At this time, we will move to our consent calendar with a reminder of the consent calendar item that we took off earlier in this in this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar? Moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Sorry, my computer is a little slow. Ms. Charis, can you please call the roll?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Siegel?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. At this time, we will move to our first presentation item of the evening and of this academic school year. And it is our superintendent's 90-day plan on listening and learning. We are excited, of course, to welcome our superintendent for her first academic year with us, and we're excited to hear about her plan and her report that she will provide to us on how she will conduct observations, findings and initial plans for us here in BUSD. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome back Superintendent Fortmore though for her 90-day plan.
Good evening again, Berkeley community. So on July 21st, I sent out a brief introduction that included a summary of my plan of entry. This evening, I would like to share a bit more about that plan, what I'm calling my superintendent entry plan, the first 90 days of listening and learning. So the Berkeley Unified School District has committed itself to providing every student access to excellence, equity, engagement and enrichment, driven by a mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. I am super excited to be a part of this community and champion these commitments in my role as the new superintendent of Berkeley Unified School District. I believe wholeheartedly that Berkeley Unified, I've said it before, I will say it one more time tonight, is particularly poised to make good on this promise to students and families. There has been so much progress towards this end to date. And it is my goal to lead the district to the next phase of realizing this mission. Doing so requires humility. It requires collaboration. It requires an unwavering commitment and a deep listening to those who have been doing and have been impacted by this work and should be informed by data. And so in my first 90 days in my role as superintendent, I want to understand these three things. I want to collect data, if you will, on these three things and some more. The main three things that I want to know as I engage our community is how close is BUSD to realizing its goal? How close are we to providing the four E's for each and every student and for operationalizing our mission? What are the challenges that must be addressed to actualize our vision and mission? And do all stakeholders truly share this desire and understand their role in making it real and true? As superintendent, I believe that I am the steward of this vision and aim. And it is essential that I understand and address these and many other questions to ensure that BUSD provides all students educational excellence centered around the four E's. So during the time of this 90-day listening and learning, I have a few goals in mind, and these goals are outlined for you here. It's really important to me to ensure an effective, efficient and orderly transition. Dr. Stevens and his amazing leadership has laid a lot of groundwork as well as superintendents prior to him. And so I want to come in and make sure that my transition is respectful of the work that's been done and keep a focus on continuous improvement and truly work to continue to increase access and achievement for all students. Another goal is to create opportunities to lift the voices, perspectives and experiences of the Berkeley community. And I want to be really clear on this point that it's really about listening broadly and deeply to a multitude of stakeholders and gaining a comprehensive understanding of Berkeley Unified. It's also about being proactive, that all voices and not just those voices who traditionally avail themselves to collaborate with the school system are heard and engaged. And really improving and increasing authentic engagement and partnership with BUSD's diverse community, partners and stakeholders. Another goal is to adhere to the board's policies and governance by developing a trusting, productive, transparent and collaborative relationship with my board to foster a culture of collective accountability and continuous improvement in service of our shared vision that advances the district's goals and our four E's. And then final goal is to identify and execute activities, initiatives that will bring a successful opening to 2223. We did that. And ultimately to accelerate progress towards our district goals and aims. The final product, if you will, of my 90-day listening and learning is to present a 90-day report that will highlight my observations, my findings and initial plan for the future. And so I'm taking all this data and looking for themes, looking for things that resonate. Director Babbitt said she's not the only one. I trust that she's not, but want to bring it to you all as our community as well as to our board, what the multiple voices are saying, but where I see patterns that can be addressed. I also hope to really reignite and create an energized district and community that's really focused on the direction of our organization and making the four E's real. And then ultimately, I will provide an outline for our plan to really establish how we as a governance team will answer that big question, which is how to engage in systemic shifts to ensure that BUSD's mission is realized for each and every student. Woo, so how am I going to do all that in 90 days? Just so you know, the the 90-day listening and learning structure is is a very structured structure. And it has some specific steps that superintendents take when engaging. And so this will be structured, but it will be inclusive of both formal and informal data collection, much of which has already started. I will work to develop a relationship with our governance team, which is the folks in front of you, the BUSD Board of Directors. I will engage in an assessment of organizational capacity and alignment. And that's with our district executive and senior staff, but also looking for alignment across our school sites and with all of our staff and district leaders. I will look to analyze multiple forms of data and review of key district documents, including our instructional frameworks, our PK 12 and MTSS supports. I will do a lot of my favorite part, community engagement, engaging students, parents, guardians, caring adults, community leaders and partners in a multitude of ways. And taking time to understand resource allocation and alignment in BUSD, which includes the review of current strengths, strategies and opportunities for improvement. It is also my goal to visit all BUSD schools. I've already visited the majority of them and sampling of classrooms across grade spans and specific programs. And then ultimately, again, creating and presenting the superintendent's action plan at the end of that period. Just a quick, little bit deeper dive into each of those areas that I just mentioned in terms of the structure. Again, it's really important to work with the board to discuss issues and matters of governance, management, core beliefs and values, and structure the work of our working relationship. There are many activities underneath here, but some of them, just to highlight, include having one-on-one meetings with our board members just to really deepen our relationship to understand each other's why and to align on our how. Scheduling a board retreat, we've just had one. We have another one that we are scheduling at the current moment to really focus on our shared values. Initiate reflections on organizational structure, start to identify areas of improvement and implementation of accountability across our districts. And then I also want to make sure that in collaboration with our board, that we develop a process and structure and timeline to really analyze and monitor or set up ways to monitor our current strategic plan, our LCAP, our improvement plan and our budget for our district. There is more that goes with the work that I'm doing with our governance team. So you're not getting off that easy, directors. But wanted to just highlight a few of them for our community members. Another important component of this, as I said earlier, is to really evaluate the district's strategic plan and instructional programs, really looking for efficiency, looking for effectiveness and looking for my, one of my favorite words, alignment and coherence. And so some of the activities in service of that is to really take time to review current central office structure to determine and really, quite frankly, to make sure there's a focus on student achievement. I've shared with our educators and with our leaders that it is my belief that everything that we do is in service of student learning. And so all that we do at the central level and all the levels in between should have a positive impact of the to the for the babies in the classrooms and also for the teachers who are in front of those students every day. And so really making sure that our central office has an orientation and a service understands their role and making sure we realize that vision and that mission and that excellence is available for every student in the classroom. We'll be engaging in one-on-one interviews with our executive cabinet, again, looking at processes and structures to measure our current plans. Already I've started this analysis and and there are many actions that come with each plan. And so really finding out where in our plans can we align and coordinate and where are we being spread thin? So looking for again, that alignment. Really taking some time to explore the current state of our strategic data monitoring. We won't know how we're doing if we're not, you know, taking time to do to take opportunities to collect data, both formative and, you know, casual data, street level data and summative data to understand implementation and impact. And so making sure that we have structures and systems in BUSD to do that is one critical part of this 90-day listening and learning. And also, we are all about teaching and learning. That's our whole why. And so making sure that I take time to analyze our instructional model and framework from early childhood to 12th grade to really work on coherence, access and rigor, as well as looking at those opportunities for intervention and multiple tiers of support for those babies who are not realizing their potential at this time. Another component again is to really do a detailed analysis and examination of a variety of data sources, particularly our student achievement data, to discern trends, patterns and areas of accomplishment and areas for additional focus. That will be inclusive of me looking at data, resource and administrative indicators using the lens of effectiveness, again, and efficiency and alignment. Wanting to check and see if the stuff that we're doing in our classrooms or say that we're doing if the programs that we are funding and putting our energy and time in is really yielding the results that we expect for them to yield. And if not, why? How can we enhance and how can we improve? And where are their gaps? What do we need to add to our programming and our model to make sure that we're serving all of our students? This also includes the valuation of operating and capital budgets for effectiveness. Are we allocating our resources accordingly? Are we putting our money where our mouth is, so to speak? And making sure that the resource allocation is aligned to our educational goals of BUSD. I will also be taking time to really review board policies and administrative regulations and look at our professional development offerings. How are we making sure that our teachers, those loving folks who are in front of our babies every day, be it a classroom or a program, really have the skills, the tools and the resources that they need to do what we're asking them to do with and on behalf of our students? My favorite part of this entire process, the part that I will never stop even beyond the 30 days, is that of engaging our families and our caregivers. Particularly over the 90 days, though, it's it's my intention to really understand the culture, history and current experiences in BUSD of those who are a part of BUSD. And so that means establishing meaningful partnerships and relationships in service of our shared mission. There is a saying, an African proverb that says, and I'm not going to say it because I never pronounce it right, but it's there, you can try it. But what it translates to is, and how are the children? It's a greeting. And one of the responses, or the response should always be what you see at the bottom. All of the children are well. And I know that every single family, every single parent, every single caregiver is here, is advocating for their babies and has voice and wants to have input. And one, making sure that when we are asked this question as a unified school district and how are the children, we are truly able to say, all the children are well. I know as a mommy myself, as a longtime educator and activist, that I cannot answer that question without the collaboration and partnership of our families and community members. And so this is always my favorite piece. What it will include is meetings with key community leaders from a list that has been informed by the board and many other folks. So when I'm having my one-on-ones and speaking, I always say, and who else should I be speaking to? That list is long. Reaching out to a multitude of critical stakeholders and establishing routine meetings. I had an amazing meeting with a number of our family leaders last Friday. And already we're in the process of creating a regular standing opportunity for me to hear from them, figure out what we're going to do together and then progress, monitor and check in. So thinking about communication protocols, thinking about how we can set up reciprocal dialogue. So I'm not just doing what I'm doing right now, but I'm actually getting to hear from folks on a regular basis. How do we focus together on increasing student achievement? And how do we have a bend towards continuous improvement? I also, as I said before, intend to conduct visits to every single school in Berkeley Unified. By the end, it says by the end of the calendar year, I'll be done probably by the end of next month, if not by the end of next week. But really taking the time to do some engagement with our principals, with our teachers, support staff and parent volunteers. That's not just about how's your experience in Berkeley, but how's your experience at this school site and as a part of this school community? And then in the process of scheduling community forums, which would be a more larger kind of town hall-like feel to gather community input and initiate continuous dialogues about student achievement and improvement. Those dates will be coming to you all shortly on the website, in our in our staff will it is. I'll also be sending this out for principals to share. And I will make sure to have a combination of both virtual and in-person options. And then the final component of this five-part structure is really to take the time to understand systems and structures around our budget allocation or our resource allocation, if you will, to really, again, make sure there's alignment, that what we're saying is important to us, is really what we're funding and that we're funding, what we're funding is actually doing what we intend for it to do. And so this includes the review of key district financial materials, most recent audits and grants, one-to-one meetings again with my budget team, folks in HR, reviewing reviewing districts fiscal projections as well as our budget documentation, reviewing employee group contracts and negotiation plans, working really closely with our labor partners already, and this is a part of that as well. And then examining the effectiveness of our information data management system, especially again around student achievement, but also inclusive of BUSD budget and human resources. How are we staffing? How are we doing on that? And how are we making sure again that our systems are telling us the information that we need to get to make informed decisions? Woo, so that is the the plan for the next 90 days. I want to be clear that the 90 days started on July 1st and really got started on August 15th, when our students and families came back. But the 90 days of listening and learning will be happening over the months of July, August and September. By the end of October, I hope to report out to you all publicly the findings, again, just focusing on the themes and the trends. And then in January, present a superintendent's action plan that will really lay out what I believe in collaboration with our governance team are the make sense areas of focus and next steps as our as a community. So that is my presentation on my 90-day listening and learning. It was all me speaking. It was all me speaking, which I won't do when we sit down and have our one-to-ones or our focus groups. This will be posted on our website, both in English and Spanish by tomorrow morning. And I am super excited. First of all, I'm really grateful for all the folks who've engaged with me thus far. It's been an amazing entry. And looking forward to engaging with a whole bunch of other folks with whom I have schedules already or those who I don't yet have scheduled. And really taking my time to, again, listen and figure out who and what BUSD is and has been to the folks that we serve and how together we can make it better. Thank you, Director President Brown.
Thank you as well, Superintendent Form Worthell. It is exciting to hear about this ninety day plan that you have for our district. I know that all of our board directors, I could see each of them at different points, smiling with joy about the direction that we are heading in as a district. And I'm excited about the opportunity for our community to engage in this process as well. And so thank you for identifying and highlighting those places for our community. And just as it was uplifted by Vice President Babett, I want to encourage our community to please take this time to meet with our superintendent, just in the same ways that you meet and engage with us, but especially with our superintendent in this process. Superintendent Form Worthell, I'm going to tie it back over to you, but I want to remind our board directors and the community that this was a presentation for the board, not a discussion. And so there won't be any other follow-up questions. I just want to highlight that. As Superintendent Form Worthell?
I, I did raise my hand on purpose because I realized that I asked that question and how are the children? And talked about community engagement, but did not really pause and say the thing that I think is most important about the community engagement is that I cannot answer and how are the children without engaging the children, the students themselves. And so a part of my community listening and learning will be meetings with various student affinity groups, student leaders and so many of our babies in the schools. And I'm not sure if I, if I said that specifically and clearly, but the children know best how the children are. And so Ian and friends, I will be making sure to engage you and include you in this process as well.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Form Worthell. And Cassarian Ingera is one of my favorite sayings. So thank you for including that. Next, we will move to our action items board numbers. We don't have any discussion items this evening. But do have four action items. I want to take just a moment to talk about the first two action items, and that's thirteen point one and thirteen point two. The approval of the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four Level Control Accountability Plan, as well as the approval for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two estimated actuals. So board and community, these two items were heard and approved by the Board of Education back on June twenty-ninth. However, they are agendized for this evening's board meeting to correct a few technical errors. And so for the first one, a correction on the order of approval, the LCAP must be provided. And so we will take care of that. We've taken care of that action. So we need to revote on that. And a similar technical error happened with our, for, for number two. And so I just wanted to let you all know that and we will take each item, item by item, of course, to vote on them. And so we'll go ahead and start with thirteen point one. I don't think there should be any further discussion on this one. And if there isn't, I'd now like to entertain a motion to approve item thirteen point one.
I'll move that.
No, I'll move it. It's been moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Alper, Ms. Charis. Can you please call the roll?
Of course, Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yeah.
Director Siegel?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Now we will move to item thirteen point two. You all heard the update around that one, so I would now like to entertain a motion to approve item thirteen point two.
I'll move that one.
Thank you, Director Alper. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babett. Ms. Charis, can you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Director Vasudev, was that you?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Ms. Charis, please let the record reflect that the second was from Director Vasudev.
Noted. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Siegel?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes. Thank you so much. Okay, now we will move to item thirteen point three, which is the second reading and approval of our BP policy, maintaining appropriate adult student interactions. And so I'll ask members from the policy committee and the superintendent if you'd like to present or speak on this item.
Present by, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, what were you gonna, go ahead.
Nope, I'm not gonna say anything. You go.
You go.
This is also just a formality because we've done the reading and the presentation before. We just needed to do a formal approval. And so I gladly will move to approve this item.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice President Babett. Is there a second?
I'll gladly second.
Thank you so much. And seeing no other discussion on this item, Ms. Charis, can you please call the roll?
Can I just say something real quick, President Brown?
Sure, I'll recognize your unreadiness, Director Alper.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm unready. I just wanted, I know Vice President Babett will join me. A number of people who helped develop this policy, including union leadership, President of the BFT, President of ECC, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza, our Title IX Coordinator, several parent members of the parent community. Am I forgetting anybody, Vice President Babett? It was, we had a number of really good discussions and wordsmithing sessions. And I think we came to a really good place. So I know that Vice President Babett and I both really appreciated all the community input. Now I'm ready.
Thank you so much for that kind addition, Director Alper. Ms. Charis, we're ready to call the roll.
Director? Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Siegel?
Yes.
And Vice President Babett?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. Well, now move on to item thirteen point four, which is the approval to form the seven eleven district committee. And here to present that will be Executive Director John Kalis. Welcome.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to share my screen. And I'm also going to introduce you all very quickly to my colleague Jennifer Gibb. She's here tonight. She's with Vanthel Construction Services. And she's here to help any, answer any questions that I might not be able to answer. So we spoke in June about the formation of a seven eleven committee, which is a statutory committee to consider the surplus of the Oxford, the original Oxford site up on Oxford Street. In June, we gave a short presentation and the board asked to come back, asked us to come back with a little bit more information. So that's what we're doing tonight. So with that, I will jump right in. One moment. Okay, so the agenda for this evening is really just to talk about the seven eleven committee, the process and the timeline. The, we wanted to address the questions and answers or revisit those rather from the June first meeting. We're seeking action from the governing board and then we'll update you on the next steps of staff. Jennifer, do you actually want to walk us through this?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Executive Director Kalis. And thank you to the President, Vice President, Directors, Superintendents, Staff and Community for having me. And so really quick, just to refresh the community and the Directors on what the process is to form a seven eleven committee. We, we came to you, I wasn't here yet, but Executive Director Kalis came in June and presented what the purpose is of the committee. And it's really to allow the board to let the community, seven to eleven community members that represent a various segments of the community, make a decision about surplus property or your property as a district. So I'm going to go over the composition of the committee a little bit more in detail to, you know, refresh the community on that. Then the committee selection process and the timeline for that. If you could go to the next slide. Wonderful. So again, as I said, the seven eleven district advisory committee is actually allowed by Education Code seventeen three eighty-eight, which allows the board to appoint community members that represent, like I said, various number of people in your community. And you can use this committee to provide community input around school surplus and/or disposition of properties. And the property at hand that we're discussing this, this evening is the Oxford, the previous site to Oxford Elementary School, which is at the eleven thirty Oxford Street. The composition of the committee is specific and it is outlined in the Education Code listed below. So it needs to represent the composition, the demographics, socioeconomics of the district. So that will be something in regards to age, population, ethnicity, et cetera. You also need to include a business member of the community as one of the representatives, a landowner or renter, somebody who lives in the community. Someone from the teachers or the administration would be sitting on this committee, parent of students in our district. And then anyone that has expertise in real estate in and or zoning and other land property use would be one of the requirements for the committee. Again, the committee is seven to eleven. It cannot be less and it cannot be more than eleven committee members. What staff is proposing is a draft schedule for the committee process. Today, we're here recommending action to form the committee between August, end of August, September. And we would like to come back in October to present to you our recommendations for that committee. So between September and October, we'll be doing a robust application process to engage the community, make sure that we are able to get the application out in all different various forms to the community so that we can select and engage all the right members in that composition that I just stated. After that, between October and December, we will actually be engaging the committee in several meetings where staff presents at the pleasure of the committee data points around Oxford site. So we would work with staff, would prepare that, present it to the committee and so on. In January, the goal is that the committee, from those three months, October through December, the committee has had time to deliberate, you know, understand the information presented, deliberate, and then bring forth a recommendation in January of twenty twenty-three. Where then the governing board can review and or approve the recommendations. And then giving some extra time to allow for the process if needed, adding, you know, between January and February for that to take place. The next is the actual meeting schedule. So just wanted to dive a little deeper into those three months period. So again, tonight, and we would ask for your recommendation to form this committee. And then between the next couple of months, we're going to gather all those applications. In October, we would come to the board, ask for the approval. And once the board approves that committee, we would want to actually hold the first meeting in October. That meeting is, is there all public? Brown Act meetings governed by Robert's Rules of Order, they would have the appropriate noticing. They'd be very, again, a robust communication by staff to make sure that the community is aware that they're able to participate in this process. It's an incredibly transparent process that that is allowed through this, just as your public board meetings are. So at that first meeting, what happens is the board, excuse me, the committee selects a chair and a chair and a vice chair. And then from there on, the chair and vice chair run that meeting and staff is really at the pleasure of the committee guiding the process and supporting them through that process. The, at the, between October and November, data will be presented in December. We'll have the opportunity to create a draft, the committee will, and then bringing forth that report in January. As Director, Executive Director Kalis stated, tonight we ask that the governing board directors approve the action to form the seven eleven committee, allowing staff the opportunity to solicit applicants throughout the community for the the criteria I stated earlier. And then if, if tonight you approve, the next steps would be staff would solicit that we would create a website. We're actually in the process in anticipation for this, creating a website with all the documents so that that can be transparent and out there for the community. We would have the applications available online and or in person. And then staff would gather those applications, review them and bring forth in October a recommendation to the board and then prepare moving forward with all the committee meetings. And that is it for the process, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board and directors may have.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. And real quick, just to recapture again, because I didn't mention it at the beginning and I apologize, but the purpose of the seven eleven committee, really the high level is, as Jennifer said, it's about the surplus and disposition. But because this property was originally purchased with public funds and because it is deemed not usable as a school site at this point, it's really up to this committee to come back with, it's an advisory body, to come back to the board with a recommendation. Obviously, we can consider selling it. We can also consider a land swap. There's different land uses, et cetera. And that's what we really have to dive deep into. The reason that I've asked Jennifer Gibb here tonight and to actually do the presentation is seven eleven committees don't happen very often. School districts typically don't surplus property. And we're fortunate enough to have Jennifer and Jennifer's actually been through several of these at different districts. So her expertise is definitely valued. So with that, I'll stop pontificating and I'll help. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Executive Director Kalis. Thank you to you as well, Jennifer, and welcome. It's nice to make your acquaintance. Just as a reminder to board directors, before we, we moved to questions, I just want to remind us of our ask tonight and our ask is to approve to form the seven eleven district advisory committee. Okay, so I just want to ensure that our questions are focused and centered around that. And so Director Sinai, I saw your hand first, and then Director Vasudev, your hand was next.
Great, thank you. And thanks so much for the clear presentation. Two questions, kind of different. One is in the sense of the deliverable in January of twenty twenty-three is, and John, I think you were talking about this, is the deliverable that the committee will be is how do we want to quote dispose of the building in the sense of it won't necessarily be a recommendation to sell to XX for blah, blah. It's more of like, we could do a variety of things without a particular resolution to like, to whom it's going to go. Is, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then the second question is just what the outreach strategy will be for the committee?
Yes.
I'm very supportive of it, so.
No, that's, it's a great question. Thank you. So the outreach will be done through facilities and through some networking that we have, but it'll also be done through our PIO. Our, excuse me, our Public Communications Officer, Trish McDermott. With the approval of this, I'd like her to send out some email blasts to our school community as well as our community at large. We can definitely publish something in the next round of the A plus news, although I don't know the date schedule on that when that comes out. But all the different mediums that we have available to us, whether it be through direct contact or email, as well as the website that's being built that Jennifer mentioned and things like that, that's how we will communicate that. We can also ask our partners, our administrators at the schools to put notice out to their individuals' commu-, school communities through their, their e-trees, I believe they call them, and whatnot, to reach the school communities at large.
Director Vasudev?
Yeah, thank you so much for, for the presentation. Since the committee is supposed to be comprised of, you know, ethnic, age, socioeconomic diversity, I wanted to make sure that we were also reaching out and making sure the materials were multilingual, so Spanish language materials out to our parent community, that we were also leveraging our existing committees and networks. So we're looking for diverse stakeholders that we're reaching out to our affinity groups and also to our D-LAC. So for looking for diverse stakeholders that we're reaching out to our affinity groups and also to our D-LAC, I think that would be really important.
Yes, so I, I think I hear the que- I think you froze. Um, but I think I understood your.
The rest of your question.
No, it's more of a comment, like, are you going to be reaching out to, and I guess the question would be following up. Are you going to reach out to D-LAC and make sure the materials are multilingual?
Absolutely. It's already been discussed in our office about ensuring that all of the materials are multilingual.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Director Vasudev, you froze for a second, so we wanted to make sure that we captured everything. All right, uh, Vice President Babett?
Uh, yes, just um, for the community's sake, if you could talk about um, how this is different from an activity that are um, are already our facilities oversight committee, that we have our construction bond oversight and our um, policy subcommittee. Just to highlight why this is um, you unique and new, unique and different and needed.
No, it's a great question. So our policy committee, our policy committee really looks at any board policy or ARs and approves them, recommends them to the board for approval. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, that's really what their responsibility, their role is, according to the ed code, is to look at the books, is to look at the audits that are done by the district as an independent and advisory body. Right? That's empowered by this board, but represents the community to ensure that all facilities expenses align with the bond language, that the, the money is spent appropriately and that the money is spent on exactly what we said we were going to spend it on. Um, that's the purpose of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. The 711 Committee is really to look at, we have this surplus property. We will, at that point, they will also have an appraisal value in their hand of what that property is worth. And what would be the best use for this? Whether it be for the district to sell it, whether it be to engage in further conversations about land swap, mixed use, et cetera. So it's really just to do that and then make a recommendation to the, to the board as an advisory committee, is what they see the best use of the land is.
And I do want to clarify, this is specific to the previous home to Oxford. It isn't for all properties in, in the district. So we're asking the Board of Directors to approve this evening a 711 District Advisory, just to review the one specific property.
Did that answer your question, Vice President Babett?
Yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to you uh, both, and thank you, Board Directors, for those questions. We are ready to take action now. And so at this time, I'll entertain a motion uh, to approve the 711 Committee or the creation of the 711 Committee.
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Charis, can you please call the role once more?
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yeah.
Student Director Siegel?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. All right, now we will go to our final um, action item for this evening, item 13.5, which is the approval for professional services to conduct appraisal of uh, 1130 Oxford Street. And uh, Director, Executive Director Kalis, I believe that is you again.
Yeah, this is normally an item that we would place on consent. But because we're doing the presentation, we don't, we just did the presentation looking for action to form the 711 Committee. We just felt that it really belonged after. So it's just a uh, the price is named in the document, it's just us engaging for professional services to have an appraisal, a formal appraisal.
Beautiful. Thank you so much for that information. Board Directors, are there any additional questions on this item before we vote? Thank you. Okay. Seeing that, we will now entertain a motion to uh, approve this item.
I'll move that.
Moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
Come on, Julie, you're the uh, Facility Subcommittee. Come on now.
I would be thrilled to second it.
With a thrilling second, um, that is Director Sinai. Uh, Ms. Charis, can you call the role once more?
Of course, Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Thrillingly, yes.
Noted. Director Siegel?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Empathically, yes.
And President Brown?
Oh gosh, yes, and yes again. Thank you so much. And the motion passes. Uh, at this time, we'll move to our second and final opportunity uh, for public comment. If you were here to speak to the Board of Education again, uh, this is our final public comment opportunity this evening. If you wish to speak to the board, please raise your hands. Students will be given priority to speak first. I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move to second opportunity for board member comments. I don't see any hands raised here, so we will move to go home. Good night, everyone, and thank you for a fabulous meeting.